DB, thank you for all you do.
Oh, no problem.
Three meetings one night.
We're once here, okay.
All right, so I call this meeting to order the Falkroft Borough Council at 7:05 PM on December the first, 2020. And I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for a moment of silence and the invocation as well as the flag salute.
Yeah, just like to take a moment of silence for Mr. Ryan. God bless you, Jack. Do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Right, the United States of America.
Republic, which is saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mayor. For anybody who doesn't know, we just had a moment of silence for the borough manager, Jack Ryan, from Norwood Borough, who has been in and around the operations of government, municipal government, for the better part of three or maybe even four decades. Borough managers from across the county who had questions would come to Jack for guidance. And I've just received word from our engineer, Ms. Catania, that Jack, we lost Jack this weekend, this Saturday, to COVID. So my thoughts and prayers are with his family and we just, the least we could do is a moment of silence. And we'll be thinking of Jack for quite some time, for many years to come. So I just wanted to say, you know, a word or two about that. On that said, I'd like to turn this over to the borough manager for the roll call.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters. Councilman Melinda, Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan. All right, he's not on yet. Councilman Robert Ruskowski.
Right.
Mayor Bob Fry.
Here.
Alex is out tonight. Dave?
Dave Sanders sitting in for Alex Ballmer this evening.
Dave, welcome.
Thank you.
You're in for a treat. Welcome to Falkroft.
I've heard.
Okay, very good. All right, so we're on to the next phase here. I think that we go to audience participation. Do we have anything, Andrew?
We did not.
We did not, okay. About the engineer's report, Ms. Catania?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm sure Carolyn and the rest of Jack's family appreciate what you've done this afternoon, this evening. Have a few things that I wanted to talk about. We have a, a plan for Safe Store that's been recorded or is in process of being recorded. I don't know where things stand at this point because the county is, I think everybody's probably aware. At this point in time, I don't believe that they're up and running. I know there, any of their IT services are not, not up and running as of right now. That being said, I don't know whether Safe Store will be able to, to do the actual process of recording plans. Because they, any of the scanning devices aren't, aren't going to be working. We haven't heard whether or not any of the other land developments or subdivisions that we're involved with have had any, have, have had any success in getting those recorded. So I wanted to let you know that we may end up if, and I was going to talk to Alex about this tomorrow. We may end up waving, I don't want to say waving, but foregoing the requirement of them having a recorded plan before they can have a building permit, just for the mere fact that if it can't happen, we know that, that we've, they've signed the plans, we've signed the plans. It's just a matter of, of that physical recording to get done. So I'm hoping that within the next week or so, we should see some, some action over at the Safe Store site. So that project will be, will be starting. The Lot Two development, which is the Popeyes, that's moving forward. There is a review. And I don't know where we stand. We need to have a planning commission meeting for that project. There's also a subdivision that, for anybody that's been around for a while, I, as a matter of fact, I think may have been while, while you were on council the first time, Mr. Papaleo. The Centembrino, Centembrino property, it was a four houses, two lot subdivision. That, that is back on, on the burner, submitted by DB developer. So we'll have to have a planning commission meeting for, for that.
What location?
You're going to ask me that? I don't have the address. I should, I should know it by heart because it, it was about a four-year process in getting the plan approved.
My guess would be at the bottom of Falkroft Avenue.
You know, Joe, my brain is, I hate to say this, but a little bit fried. So I'll, I'll email you the, the address tomorrow.
Yep.
The, I wanted to talk a little bit about the community development block grants. There's, there's two of them. And then we have an application round that's, that's due in January. I asked Andrew today to send out a memo that I have of potential projects. Take a look at it. There, it's not all encompassing. Just to give you an idea of various projects that we could do. From what I'm hearing, County Council is, is hot to trot, if you want to call it that, on park projects. So unfortunately, because we have Greenways money for the playground, for the amphitheater, that next section of the playground, we will not be able to use County CDBG funds. They, they are frowning on doing something like that. But there's, there's other things that we could do in Montgomery Park. We last year did a master, we applied for a master plan for Hook Road and Delmar Drive jointly with Darby Township. I also have that on Darby Township's list. So I don't know where that will go with, with Darby Township. It's there. We could do it separately. We're better off if we would try to do it jointly. That project, if we don't get it, I'm going to suggest we put it in for a TC DI grant. DVR PC has a grant that's just a planning grant and that would fit well with the TC DI. Our zoning ordinances are in need of some updates. The comprehensive plans in need of some updates. We're doing sanitary sewer improvements from 2020. I'm still waiting for some information from Delcora because some of the video that they sent was incomplete. So as soon as Jim Califera sends that, we'll be able to finish that spec. So that would be ready to go out to bid shortly.
You said, did I, did I lose you there for a minute? My cat just jumped on my computer. My computer went blank. So it was, I was probably yelling. So forgive me.
I guess I should ask to everybody, did I lose everybody else?
Were we still broadcasting?
I think we heard you, Lisa.
All right.
Showing the cat.
It was just the cat. Felix should stay in his spot. I'd like to get at the next meeting an authorization to bid the 2021 road program. That's the restoration work for the village. So if we get it in, we'll have contracts by February and make sure that, that we're the first on the list when the plant's open in April. So I'd like to get that.
But does that have to be on the next meeting agenda to vote on?
That would be on your, on your regular meeting agenda, as well as the resolution for community development block grant.
Okay.
So I have, I have a template for the resolution. I'll put that together. We'll have to add which projects. So if, in the meantime, anybody has any additional projects, we have to do a public hearing, which was advertised. Andrew did find the advertisement that was advertised with all of your regular meeting schedule. Didn't hear anything concerning the, the MS4 plan that was put together. So we will be sending the 30-day notification to the, to DEP that the 30-day comment period is over for the residents. We had no comments come in and they'll move forward with doing the plan review. I have the Falkroft Library. We have some flooring alternatives. We contacted three companies and have gotten some budget numbers. So Dylan from my office is one of our architectural staff. We'll be in touch with Jen to give her those numbers. Talked to Keystone Grant, that department. And I'm sorry, I feel like I'm, I'm all over the place tonight. And the Keystone project, or the Keystone Department has advised us that we are eligible for the next grant round. So so we'll look forward to that, get that, get that moving. That would probably be for some sort of flooring, whether it's carpet, tile, painting, the library, and then whatever else Jen has, has on her mind. But I think that would be enough for a Keystone grant that it would be palatable for, for those that would do the plant, do the application review.
Okay, great. I will, I will send Jen a text tomorrow, letting her know that you'll be in contact with her.
Okay. I'm not so sure that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
With the numbers and stuff of flooring.
Okay.
If you want me to. If you don't, then I won't.
No, go ahead. I, I, I'm not, I'm going to tell you that I'm not so sure. She may write back and say Dylan already did it. Because I talked to Dylan this afternoon about it. So that may, it may already be, she, she may have already been, I've heard from him.
Informed. All right. I'll just say if you weren't informed already, or that you'll be in touch with her to go over stuff.
That's fine. That's absolutely great. I haven't heard from D.
Thank you, Lisa.
Oh, you're welcome. I haven't heard anything from DEP concerning the change in the scope for the pump station for that small grant that we received, the $34,000. So until I have that approval, I'm going to, we had, I had suggested that we would get an authorization to bid that. We'll wait till January to do that. Hopefully by then we'll hear from DEP. I want to go ahead and do it and then DEP tell us no. Speaking of changes in scope, the other thing that I wanted to talk about Falkroft Avenue Bridge, I think everybody's aware of the PennDOT has it on their list to be demolished, except I went online to, to see where things stand. And I don't, I don't find that let at all. So I'm going to, to try to research it and possibly at the next meeting, maybe we ought to look at some other alternative project and go to County Council, to OHCD, and see if we can't get something done with that money before that money's not available anymore. It just.
I heard that, that there were, I don't, I mean, for the most part, most residents in the area don't want that bridge restored.
It's not being restored, Joe. It's actually going to be demolished. So our project was to, to.
Have a turnabout.
Right, to put the turnabout and landscape it so that we don't have residents that are coming up to that edge. Or the, the end of the street and not having any way of turning around other than other people's driveways. So since, until I can find out what's actually going on with it, we lost our liaison, Tom French, was the one that always gave us the heads up as to what was going on. And since he's retired.
He doesn't.
It's not as easy to find somebody to, to, to get that information. It might be worth the phone call to, to Representative DeLusa's office and see if somebody over there can't, can't find out for us where that stands. I'm going to try again tomorrow with some people I know at PennDOT, see where we are.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. That's more than I should have had. And I apologize for being all over the place.
Maybe we can carve out some time this week to decide what projects, is that, is that greening project at the corner of Primus and Delmar, is that eligible for some of the, the, so we have to pick? We have to do.
I think it would be, I think it would be eligible. However, we have to get PennDOT approval for it. I don't know that it's something, it's such a small project, we'd be better off going to Pico Green Region or someplace like that to green that up. It's, it's more suited because it's a smaller project.
Okay. I think it's a small project with a big impact. So that's, I love that.
Yeah, exactly. So a community development block grant, we're doing plans, we're doing specs, we're doing bids. You're putting a lot of money out for a project that, that we could do under a community, under the Pico Green Region, for example. Might be something to talk to Michelle Garrity about.
Okay.
And move forward with that.
Okay.
Lisa? Are, are they going to mill the road before the spring in the village?
Um, no. What, what will happen is the, the company that's working there now has a subcontractor. They'll go in, they'll do all of the trench restoration. And they'll bring the binder course up to the level of the road, the existing road. That'll be hot mixed. So that'll be a permanent, we'll come in, in the spring, once, once the plants open, mill the roadway and pave all the roads. And it'll be from curb to curb.
But it's going to be the winter.
I'm sorry?
Where the trenches are, that's going to be smooth, level?
It will be smooth, yes. Yes.
Before, before the spring.
Before the spring. They'll come in, they'll do the permanent trench restoration, and then we'll mill and pave the road.
Yeah, because the way it is now, I think they'd rip the plow off of the truck if they tried plowing.
I, I agree. And as a matter of fact, one, one of the caveats when I said the, that the, the council had agreed to the offer for fee and lieu, I requested that the contractor go back in and do temporary restoration because the, the trenches are getting in poor shape again. So, so until, until they're ready to move. But from what I understand, they're, they're ready to move in the next couple of weeks. They'll start doing the preparation.
Lisa, thank you for, for that. There have been a lot of questions about the, you know, because the situation with the trenches are, it is pretty bad. But I'm, I'm glad to hear that, you know, we've got that sorted out. I, from what I understand, they've started some of that work already. But I, I don't, you know, I don't know for sure.
I spoke to Rich Brenner earlier. He said that they were, I believe, beginning that work today on Taylor Drive.
Okay, good. Very good.
Although his, his company's not the one doing it, but he was aware of this.
Yeah, part of Taylor Drive got done today. It looks a lot better and a lot smoother.
Good, good, good. All right. So let's, if, if everybody's okay with it, I'd like to move into the body of the, of the, of the, the agenda here with, we'll start with public finance and administration. So I think Andrew sent out a preliminary budget. I do want to discuss the status of the budget. Kyle, myself and Mike, Mike, are you on? Yeah, Mike's on the call. We spent hours and days on the phone. One night I was up till two or three in the morning toying around with things until we, we crunched the numbers and found a budget that worked. With the new building and the, the estimated cost of satisfying or, or, you know, satisfying that loan, there is going to be roughly 200 and, 260,000. Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just going off the top of my head here, but some $260,000 additional annual contribution to, to loan, to debt.
Yeah, it's, it's 240,000 and some change per year on the debt service that had to be added to the budget for next year.
And the first year, there's a slightly larger chunk, is that right?
Um, I believe, I could go through, I'd have to look. And I don't know if Mike, you have off the top of your head either. I do believe it's a little bit reduced for the first payment. But I believe once the project gets going, it's either the second payment or the third where it starts, it ups to the full amount, where it would be the 240.
So, given, given that and some of the increases we've seen in expenses due to COVID, there is, th- this year's budget is going to require a tax increase. In that budget, there are plans for, for stowing away some financial resources for, for future projects. Because a lot of people seem to think that this building is the end of all of our problems. When they're, in the reality of it is, is that when we fix the problem of the new building, there will be new problems that are created. At some point, we will have to move the highway department from the, the current location where it is, which means we'll have to procure land to build another pole barn to house the highway department. There are going to be additional things that have to be done in order to complete this and to see this through to completion. And then redevelop the area in Old Falkroft that is vacated at, at the retirement of the old building. So our problems don't end when this new building is completed. I want to make that very clear with everyone. So that, in addition to preparations that are going to be required for, after the building has been built, that did factor into, you know, the tax increase. I want people to understand, you know, before we get into it, that, that this will represent much needed investment in the borough. You're, we're not going to be raising your taxes in exchange for nothing. There, you will start to see some noticeable physical and, and visual changes to the improvement of the borough. Kyle, is there anything else you want to add? Or Mike?
Yeah, I also wanted to say, in fact, for the, when you were talking about the stowing away money, a good portion of that is actually for the capital reserve, which is to help protect the borough from, you know, the portions of time when taxes haven't come in yet at the beginning of the year and things like that. So.
That's the, that's the operational reserve.
Operation, I apologize, operational reserve. So a good portion of, I, yes, I have my terms mixed up, the operational reserve. So there's that as well. And we actually end up with our increased expenditures coming in underneath of the $240,000, if I remember correctly. I want to check to make sure I'm not speaking out of turn there, which means that we ended up, we made some, we made some difficult choices to make sure that we weren't doing too much, right? We were trying not to hurt people as much as possible. So.
Right. Right. So I think it will represent an increase in real estate taxes. And I think maybe an increase in fees for businesses from $25 to $50 for the business license. But our, our tax mileage comparative to our neighbors is pretty low.
Right, your one mil as opposed to one and a half and three mils in other places.
Right. With, with the business mileage?
Yes.
Yes, yeah. So are we going to, I mean, we're still sort of toying with the, with, with, you know, adjustments in, in the business mileage. But we may not need to even do that. We might not need to do that. We'll just raise the fees on the, on the licensing. But you know, really all sort of depends on what we want to do. Do we want to start, you know, raising revenue for increased investment in, you know, commercial areas where we want to re, you know, redevelop? Do we start procuring land and start moving things into land banks? In order to do these things, you need money. So we, we have to start thinking about that now. The immediate though, is that once this building is built, in order to redevelop the property that the current borough building is on, we have to move the highway department. It's going to be another expense. We, we have to purchase land or find a place, a home for it and build it. We have to build, you know, a new garage. So that, that is, you know, it's considerable. After that's completed, there, you know, this budget and this financial path that we're putting the borough on is going to put us in a position where we will have excess reserves to, to play with, to toy with and determine what we want to do in order to improve our borough. A lot of people will complain about the, the quality of living in Falkroft. They complain about the way it looks or the way it feels or whatever. The, the fact of the matter is, I get it. If you want that to change, that costs money. Okay, we're not going to complain our way to a better borough. So we have to reinvest. And I want to just drive that home for anybody who's watching. It was a difficult decision to make, but I think that everybody who lives here deserves the best version of Falkroft that we could provide for them at the best possible price. And so that was all taken into consideration with this, with the crafting of this budget. Does anybody have any questions? Okay. Going once, going twice, on to public works. I'll turn it over to Councilman Willis. I did want to discuss with you that I talked to Sean, Councilman, about the things that we would like to purchase for the highway department. And there are two ways we can go with that. I think we already have the $35,000 in for the front end loader that's in this budget. We have that to spend this year. Is that correct? We have that planned.
That was, that was in the 2020 budget. They had set aside 34, I believe it was 30,000 for the front end loader, which is the amount that we authorized for the bid.
Okay. So in this new budget, we're also planning for an additional $35,000 capital investment each year into that department. So that could mean we could decide to finance the next truck that we need for the, because we want an additional plow. We need an additional lawnmower. He would like a wood chipper. So we could start doing some of our own landscape, remove tree removal and such. The advantage of that is I think it also makes our own mulch for our playgrounds if, if he wants to do it that way, so that there's an additional savings there. But that additional $35,000 line in, in the next budget includes that. And we will include that every year until our highway department, matched with grants that Lisa can help us with, is, is fully staffed and properly equipped. That's the plan. So I, I didn't mean to steal your thunder there, Kyle, but if you got anything else.
I actually had something to attach kind of to the end of yours, which was the, the Borough App and CRM stuff that we had discussed in the past. This is more a finance and admin thing, but at the suggestion of Alex, we went and found another price quote due to the fact that there was such a wide variability in the pricing. He wanted to make sure we were covered so that, you know, we knew that the price squarely fell below the phone bid rather than, you know, it actually was supposed to be above the phone bid. And we just got one person who bitted very low. The, the one company that I had actually reached out to earlier in the process, their, their contact ended up in our email spam folder. So I didn't notice until just recently. I spoke to them, their numbers also fall below the phone bid numbers as well, the way their, their pricing structure works as well. So we are squarely below that for this. So I am going to put together some information for comparison between the two, at least two of the companies, so that we can make our choice. I have my suggestion. But we kind of want to take a look at it and see where they are, I believe. And Dave, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. Because these prices fall below our phone bid, we can go with whoever we would like. We don't have to go with the lowest bidder necessarily.
That's right.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't speaking out of turn there. There are some, not really service differences, but mostly just kind of like aesthetic differences and some just little things about the way that it operates that, you know, you, we may like one way or another that would lead us to choose one over, one company over the other. So I will put together that information and send that out as soon as I have the final pricing, just to confirm that we are, yes, we are good and we're below those numbers. But I wanted to keep you guys up to date and possibly once we have those numbers, that may be one of those things that changes from a preliminary budget to a final budget for next year. As far as highway department goes, I, there's not really anything to report, Andrew, unless I am, oh, we were looking at a front end loader. It's for bid, but unfortunately, as I understand it, that one got away from us under municipal bid. So we are still in the process of trying to find one. So that we, that falls under the $30,000 threshold. Is that correct?
Yeah. So we did a, we put out a bid on municipal bid. I confirmed with Alex that even though we allocated $30,000 for the advertisement, that was still acceptable. And acceptable use of the, of that funding, since everything on municipal bid is, is co-stars, I believe, or they, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, unfortunately, the item that we were looking at, which suited our needs, somebody had outbid us above the $30,000 threshold that you, you, you sent. I spoke to Colleen Gray, Lisa, I saw you just unmuted, so feel free to jump in too. But I understand that that, that's going to open up on December 16th, correct me if I'm wrong? So what I've said, because I spoke to Alex about this, is that there's no rule that says that we can't deliver that bid or that, that, that the bid specs to local businesses or municipalities who might have applicable equipment. That it might be a good idea since what we're looking for is pretty specific and maybe in the interest of saving a couple thousand dollars to, to drop off those bid specs at neighboring municipalities and other areas and then have Sean look at the equipment and then we can make a decision.
Is Sean on the call?
I don't see him on here, no.
No, okay. All right. I'll, I'll shore up with him, I guess, tomorrow. So we're, I understood there was something, we had to put out something for a bid for this thing. Did we put the bid out or not? What happened? So we're, I understood there was something, we had to put out something for a bid for this thing. Did we put the bid out or not? What happened?
We did.
We, you know, we, we put the bid out, but we also authorized this to do the immunity bid and these other systems that are. You, they are authorized through the state to allow us to not have to put out the bid, so we kind of allowed ourselves the room to do that as well. At the $30,000 limit, so that's one, we just kind of lost this specific backhoe, and now. Alex has recommended that Andrew kind of. Deliver the, the specs of the bid that we put out to different people to see if we can get more interest. Because not everyone's necessarily looking for that bid and they may not have seen it, I believe is my understanding of it. And I believe that's my only thing for this.
So we essentially craft, we crafted a bid for an item that sold.
We, we crafted a bid for an item and then we found one and we just lost the, the bidding war.
We, we crafted that bid before we found the item.
Yeah, we just, it's eBay, we, we lost, we lost, someone outbid us.
Yeah, a different tool, and I spoke to, to Sean about it, I mean, it honestly even needed a little bit of work. I, he said we probably could have gotten five to seven years out of it. I think that's acceptable personally, but. We'll find something. I'm, I'm not particularly worried. There's enough of them out there. We'll get something.
Okay.
All right, that is all I have for this specific section.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Councilman Willis. Moving on to Public Safety Committee, Councilman Ruskowski.
I have nothing to add.
All right, very good. Moving on to Public Health and Literacy, Councilwoman Isaac.
Yes, the library board or the library is still doing the safety protocol for COVID. Jen had sent me the calendar for the month of December. I believe tonight they're doing like a virtual ginger house. Make the bed, ginger house making. So that sounds pretty cool. I didn't get a chance to really, she just sent it me today, so I didn't get a chance to jot down all the events. So what I can do, Joe, is forward it, or I could send it to you. And if you want to send out a group text, that would be great because I'm not good at that, I'm sorry. And they're doing everything that they need to do to comply with the state.
Okay.
Library.
I did have a question. Somebody, you know, one of the residents was asking me about, is there any way we can get some of that stuff on our website too from the library or?
I was about to ask Mindy to send me the, the calendar of events that you were sent, and I would post the events on the website.
Sure.
And start working on that. That was going to be my question for Mindy anyway.
I'm sorry, I beat to it. But yeah, if you could send it to Kyle, Kyle's going to be the, the, I mean, he can get that stuff on the website.
Alright, then I'll send it to Kyle, and then Kyle, since you're going to put it on our website, anybody can just go on there and look then.
Yep.
Instead of doing a group text, because I know I personally don't like group texts.
Yeah, I will, I'll take care of getting it published there.
Okay, after the meeting, I'll take it, I'll save it to my photo and send it over to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so for municipal planning and zoning, Councilman Waters, I think, Lisa, did you say something about we need to get our, our planning commission? Meeting for something?
Yeah, the, there's a, there's a couple of projects. One, one is not for action. That's the, the second lot, which is the Popeyes. That like the planning commission to see it, since, since the previous planning commission actually acted on that. Dollar general with the second lot being a, just a.
Concept.
Future development. So the second one is that, is the. Property for DB developers, and I'm assuming Andrew could probably answer this better than, than I would know. Last, last we spoke, the developer submitted the application, but did not submit any of the fees. So our 90 day clock starts from. The meeting, the first meeting of this group, so I don't know whether it started. Depending on when those checks came in, whether it started with your last meeting, your regular council meeting. Or it starts, it could have started tonight. So we have to take, take into consideration that 90 day clock. You have to take action within 90 days of, of that start date. So we need to, we need to verify what date the application was complete.
Andrew, I need you to fire up the VSO on that tomorrow. All right, Nick, I'm sorry, I kind of was just pointing you in the direction there. I'd like you to get familiarized with your planning commission. Andrew, I'd like you, yeah, I'd like you to put, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Joe. Actually, I did have some information for that.
Okay.
We wanted, we had a zoning hearing board meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at seven regarding that new 7/11. Uh, this may be delayed, I'm sorry, this may be delayed to January because of participants. I would like to be, you know, via Zoom, virtual. It's initially scheduled in person. And Andrew directs Steve to set a room, a Zoom meeting. However, there may not be enough time to do this, I'm not sure, Joe.
Okay. Just Andrew, can you fill me in a little bit too on what, what you know?
Sure, so yeah, and Nick, just so you know, or Councilman Waters, just so you know, the, since, since you and I have spoken about this. The meeting was officially delayed. The applicant for the zoning hearing board meeting was scheduled for tomorrow. I decided to delay. Originally, it was scheduled to be an in-person meeting, this later decided to change, but. We didn't have the logistic opportunity, I think, to, to switch things over. My understanding also was that there was some, an issue because the. Meeting had been advertised and the postings have been placed. Saying that it was an in-person meeting and it would not be an in-person meeting, that it would be best to get a continuance. And the applicant in this case is Bob Lynn for the 7/11 project at 1498 Delmar. So, so it'll be continued into January, and that's what I believe we're going to be doing here.
Okay, all right. I don't like it, but it is what it is. Moving on to municipal parks and recrea, or public parks and recreation, Councilwoman Daly.
We got thrown off track a little bit here, so we canceled slash postponed the tree lighting. I got to talk to my committee about what we want to do with our craft bags and all that nonsense, nonsense, I'm sorry. And hopefully figure out what our plans are through the holidays. Tonight just got posted. Our Christmas decoration contest, our holiday contest, so.
Can I, can I offer a bit of, you're doing a wonderful job. I'm the best I've seen in forever. As long as I've been here. So I've had some people say that they don't love the idea of the, the winners being selected by vote, because. In a community maybe where there's a lot less housing, they don't have as much popularity, so to speak, with their surround. Is there a way it could be segwayed from a vote-based winner to a judges-based winner?
So we did a judges-based winner for 4th of July, and it was very difficult to get people who were comfortable judging, and it was also. Hard when the judges actually know a lot of the people because we're residents. So that was difficult too. So that's why I tried the other way for this last time.
I mean, they should be like dignitaries, like if, you know, there's a, you know, like a county council member, a congresswoman or a state rep or. You know, people that maybe don't live here, but.
That would be you then, because I'm not a politician.
Is it too late to, to adjust that part of it? If, if, if maybe we could work on a panel of three or four judges? Yeah, let's just go with what it is this year.
I would say going forward, maybe we'll look back to doing it that way. Like I said, we did it for 4th of July and. It was, it was very difficult. It was very difficult. And a lot of it was because a lot of people that the judges knew. Had, had entered into the contest, and it's hard when you know the people, not wanting to let anybody down.
And this is Fallcroft, the sore loser might take out your headlight. I mean, if, if they know who.
Let's hope not, let's hope not. So we're gonna, I talked to Jenna today. About meeting up and figuring something out. We might try to do the tree lighting on the same day that the firehouse does the Santa. Going around, because we did purchase stuff, planning to have, like, people stop by. It was all going to be to-go, virtual, take your hot chocolate goodies with you, but once I got sick and Jenna had to quarantine. We've, we've kind of locked it down for now, so we're going to work some stuff out this week and figure out what the plans are. Craft bags are coming, same thing, we just have to give us a little bit of time to get them together. And Andrew, I don't know the status of the ornament bags, but hopefully people have been coming to pick them up.
I gotta tell you, Lee, this is your first event that's not gotten a lot of participation. Normally, bags are gone in about two hours. And right now, maybe a quarter have been taken. I'm sorry to tell you.
That's okay. I, I actually think that I was not alone in having been sick for the past two weeks. A lot of people. Unfortunately, are dealing with the same thing that I was dealing with, and I think maybe that's slowing down our progress of picking up. So maybe my committee will do something where we'll have a day where we have the bags outside and people can come get them. Maybe that'll help. So we'll see, but that's where we are. We're working on it. It's a, been hectic with being sick, but we're, we're getting better, so that's all that matters.
Cool. All right, I'm glad to hear that. You look good. You sound good on the mend. So, you're doing a great job and, and nobody's going to fault you for, you know. For where we're at right now, given the circumstance.
Yeah, that was not, not a fun two weeks, and it was a little sketchy there for a couple days, and all four kids were sick and myself, so it was not. Ideal, so I appreciate, you know, Andrew came and helped me out, Kyle called, you guys all called, so I appreciate it. It was a rough, a rough two weeks.
All right, is that, is that all for Parks and Rec?
Yes, for now.
Okay, all right. For municipal legislation, Councilman Waters?
Yes, Joe, we have no new business this evening, however, the next one we will. We need a vote on a resolution establishing borough liquor license transfer application. Allison, Andrew, the draft of the resolution is about to move. I suggest that we charge the same amount on the borough charges for conditional zoning applications.
Okay, all right, very good. And Andrew. Do we need legislation for the, 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 the millage to set the millage in the, in the borough?
You mean for that, that intermunicipal liquor? No, I don't think there's anything to do with that. It's just.
No, 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 this is a completely separate question. Is that considered municipal legislation? Is there, there's a need to be an ordinance? To set the millage, I believe. Is it a resolution? I think it's.
It's a blank space in the current resolution that we have. It's not an ordinance.
For the tax?
Yeah, for the, for the fee for the intermunicipal charter, yes, yes.
The fee for what?
For the, for the, for the fee for this process, yes, it's in the resolution.
Andrew, I think he's asking you.
Yeah, we're.
Separate question.
Yeah.
About transfer of.
You're doing checkers on plan chess.
To do the tax levy for 2021.
Ah, okay.
Do we need, under municipal legislation, to have a resolution passed to levy the taxes for 2021?
Is it a resolution or is it an ordinance? Is it, are taxes set by ordinance?
Mike, are you?
I think it's a resolution on your, on your real estate taxes. I think it's by resolution. If you were doing a local services tax. Or, or an earned income tax, that would have to be by ordinance under Act 153. But because it's the local real estate tax that's authorized by the borough code, that can be done by resolution.
Okay.
Right, and with the increase in the business privilege fee going from 25 to 50, that, that will have to be an ordinance, right, Dave?
Yeah, I, I, that I was unaware of, but I will talk to Alex about that. You're raising the, exactly what?
The, the business purpose license fee from 25.
The license fee.
Correct.
License, the license fee should be by resolution.
Okay.
I don't think you need an ordinance to do that. Again, you can't play around with your business privilege tax. That's either. In effect or it's not in effect, and you can't play with it. So you're going to leave that alone, but the application fee, the license fee.
Correct.
By resolution.
Okay.
Oh wait, so the business privilege tax, once enacted, it's not on it, like, once you have it, don't you have between one and three points to play with? Or no?
On the business privilege tax, I wouldn't touch the, I don't think you should touch the, the business privilege tax. That's something that was phased out. By legislation in the 90s, and if you have it, you can keep it. If you don't have it, you can't now enact it. So I don't want anybody to look at your business privilege tax and say, these guys changed it or played around with it. And that's a reason why they, it should be gone. Last thing we want. So I'd keep the business privilege tax the same. The license fee is a different story. You can make that by, adopt that by resolution.
Okay, cool. Cool, sounds good to me. All right. So, anything else, Nick? Are you, you done in your?
That's all I have, Joe.
All right, now to the, to the good stuff. The, the new construction committee.
Council. All right, so we are through the DCD approval. We have our DEP approval. We have all of our approvals. So we are looking to close on the loan on the 15th, and that seems to be a pretty. Hard date where we should be good for that, which means we are about ready to go. We should be. Good to break ground and get started as soon as the loan is closed and we can move. I have a meeting with. The contractor, Bob Lynn, and a couple other people on Thursday at 10:30 to start nailing down some details, but. One of the things that we kind of wanted to discuss is more ceremonial in nature. The idea of the groundbreaking ceremony. Originally, this was planned when we were going to be able to start. Months ago. Originally, we were going to kind of let them do some. Site work, clean it up a little bit, and then do a groundbreaking ceremony. So the question just is, it may be possible to do a groundbreaking ceremony this year if we don't want them to do the site work. But if we want to wait for them to clean it up, make it look nice, then we could do the groundbreaking next year, early next year, January, and kind of depending on what the schedule looks like. But I wanted to feel out how people.
Can they build through winter?
Depends on the temperature and depends on what part of the building they're doing. So, you know, if you're done with concrete and you're done with most of the block. Then, yeah, I mean, you may need some heaters depending on how cold it gets, but the real, the real problem with construction, and Lisa, you can correct me if I. Misremembering this, but it's concrete and then it's mortar. It's the real problem with temperatures and the ground freezing and things like that, right? Okay.
We got the nod.
Those are the two big problems. So if the temperature holds up, because right now, I mean, 40, 50, 60 degrees.
Lovely.
Sweet, sweet temperature. So if the temperature holds up, they may be able to get that stuff done, but.
Okay, all right, so what everybody wanted to do, do we want to wait until, or do we want to have like the, you know, the?
Joe, hold on a second. Lisa unmuted. Did you have something for us?
Sorry, Lisa.
No, all I was going to say is there's admixtures to, to concrete, so you can get that concrete. What you want to have done is before you have any severe weather, you want it under roof.
Okay, yeah.
So depending on where we are. The last piece that we, that we need is the building permit, so we're still waiting on some information. We should have that shortly. And contractor, any of the, the mortar is, is what you have to worry about because it's. Because that mixture, that water will freeze very quickly, and you can't put in that mixture in. Concrete's better.
Okay.
Is easy to work with.
So, thank you. But yes, it's the ceremonial question. What, what do we want to do on stand-on ceremony, really?
Yeah, I mean, do we want to do the ceremony on a nice, clean surface where they've, they've sort of mediated or mitigated the. The site, did a little site work first, or do we want to do it now with those ugly fences up and?
Clean it up.
I think we should clean it up.
I think so too. Let's clean it up and then set the date for when we're going to do that. If we're looking into January of doing that, especially if it's during the week, like I know for myself. I am working Christmas and New Year's because of the night, my job, that if I know in advance when we're looking. I could put actually off to be that day we're doing the breaking ceremony.
If I may, if I may, just because we've done several of these over the years. What, what typically happens is the contractor will take one specific area. And clean that area up. You're not, you don't have to do the entire site. In order for you to have a groundbreaking ceremony. The idea is clean up one specific area. Which actually could be right next to where your playground is, so you're seeing, seeing some. A continuation of that master plan, right? And, and just do it right there. You're only looking for photos, and it is more of a ceremonial thing. So you don't have to have everything, everything gone, because the photo. So you don't have to have everything, everything gone, because the photo isn't going to show all of that. If you wait until January, I will tell you, the contractor will tell you that he will not be able to start the project. He'll, he'll not be under, under any kind of roof, and I think that's going to, to impede your, your progress. Just, just, yeah, boost of experience, if I may.
All right, I think that's good sound, good sound feedback. So let's, that said, is there a way we can do this without, you know, having to, can we get, just get this thing moving?
So why, why don't I, I will let everyone know after I've had the, had the meeting on Thursday, what the, what a possible schedule is going to look like? Because I assume that will be on the docket to talk about tomorrow and tomorrow, Thursday, and we can plan on something from there. This can just be an extension. So the, I guess the sentiment is do it as soon as we can and just get moving.
Get this thing, get this built.
Okay, so that will be, that will be my takeaway from this. But it can be well noted, we have, we've pulled it off, we got every, we caught up, we got everything done. Thank you to Lisa and Bob Lynn, who is not on the call, for all of the hard work in getting this actually through the finish line, and Alex as well, who is not here either, all the people who did a lot of the work to get this thing over the finish line. So we should hopefully be starting soon. And I took your, I took your suggestion, Lisa, and flew the drone over for some videos. So I'll do that every once in a while, so we can get a nice, cool montage of it being built. But as far as this specific thing, unless anyone has any questions for me, there's the, there's your good news.
Is that our, is that the extent of our, of our time lapse as your drone?
I mean, yeah, I mean, it's going to be, it should look good.
It is, yeah, I'll take it, I'll take it. That's, that's, that's what we could do, that's what we got. It's cool, it's cool with me. Good, that's good, that's good news, so that's cause for celebration, I have champagne. And, and I will be hitting that bottle right after this meeting for show. So on to parking permit and paving committee.
All right, so we have another meeting scheduled for tomorrow night at 5 o'clock. We are going to, we are suggesting, after the last meeting with Alex and everyone there, we are suggesting that we move forward with possible changes to our code for the, for the upkeep and the maintenance of the driveways as kind of the stick portion of the carrot for the, the maintenance portion, looking at that code and trying to adjust it. And so we'll discuss those things and make recommendations to council for the general meeting. We are also going to start to nail down and the details of the parking as well, because to do the driveway, we're going to want to show revenue so that we can possibly borrow against that or whatever we end up doing to fund the restoration of the driveways. We're going to need to have that, those plans in place. So we're going to start discussing price of permits, you know, all the different things, timings, all those little nitty-gritty details that have to go into this and make our recommendations for council for the meeting in December, for us to discuss just kind of what's going on. And then we may be looking January for an actual ordinance passage of that, maybe at the latest February, but hopefully we should be good for that for January. But that is our current status of this project. I don't know if Froggo has anything or Andrew that I might be forgetting. But, yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay, and unless anyone has any questions? Okay, that's all I, Joe, you're muted, so.
Great, great, I've never muted at the right time. So I'd like to attend the next parking permit and paving committee meeting. So let me know whenever, whenever that, that next one is. Moving on, I wanted to just say that on December 30, is it December? When is the? So on 12/31, which it looks like it's New Year's Eve, we will be having a very brief, is that a very brief meeting for the budget? We have to pass the budget by the 31st, so it will be a very brief. I, I do encourage the, the, there's going to be a, you know, a cheers, have a small bottle of champagne readily available. But yeah, so we, we will, you know, we didn't think about that, but it's, it has to be done on the 31st. It will be advertised tomorrow. But 12/31 is New Year's Eve, so right after, you know, we have to, we have to, it's, are you, did you advertise it yet, Andrew?
Yep.
All right.
What time are we planning to do that at?
It can be anytime, just so you know, Joe.
It could be anytime during that day?
Yeah, it could be 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, it's fine. It could be 11:45 PM.
Well, wait, did you advertise it yet?
So yeah, Andrew.
There's no, there's no time yet, it's not, that, that's not advertised, it's the budget is advertised. It has, the meeting has to be on the 31st, you have to call it, but the time of day is not relevant. I was kidding about 11:45, yeah, by the way.
Okay.
Ultimately, Mr. President, you'll need to figure out a time so that you can advertise the special meeting separately from advertising the budget. But you'll all have to figure out a time to do it, put that in the ad, you need at least 24 hours notice in the newspaper before the special meeting, and away you go.
Okay, all right. Okay, so does anybody have any suggestions on what time we should meet?
Anytime after 4 o'clock, because I work 8:00 before.
All right, I can. Can we do 5 o'clock?
5 o'clock is perfect, that gives me time to get home and to get ready, get on.
And like, Lisa, I don't even think you have to, you don't necessarily have to be there. If you don't want to, if you want to, we'd be happy to have a glass of champagne with you during the meeting for, for, for New Year's Eve, but you don't have to be there. In fact, other than the solicitor, do we require, and then maybe the finance director, I don't think we require any of the other contractors to be there, am I right? Okay, all right, okay, so I just wanted to mention that, let's get on to the police chief's report, sorry, chief.
I do not believe the police chief is here, Joe.
Oh, all right.
He's away, actually, just so you know.
He is, yeah, he's on vacation, solicitors' report?
No separate report this evening, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, sir, finance director's report.
I'm sorry. Mr. Papaleo?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yep, I'm, okay, I'm on.
Okay.
Just a couple, let me grab my reading glasses.
Sure, sure, no problem.
We are pleased to announce that we've reconciled all the bank statements for Republic through October 30th. They, they weren't reconciled from until June, so we're able, we're able to get that done. So we reconciled four months of bank statements within the last week. So we have a good feel of the borough finances. As you know, Andrew was working hard and Alex on drafting a resolution to get MNT to have the appropriate officials as signers on the signature cards for MNT, so we could actually know what our balances are. Andrew forwarded some statements to me, so I think that we have a good feel of where, where we are revenue-wise. Our big expenditure coming up is, we have a $350,000 lease MNO that's due on December, by December 31st. So right now, we have, unfortunately, there was a lot of past due bills that we inherited, so we, it's a lot of catching up to do. The Republic account has approximately $405,000 in it. And the MNT account, which comes through with the EIT and LST, has about 80. So we're hoping there's an influx of some real estate taxes near the end of the year. It's going, it's going to be tight near the end of the year, I mean, there's, there's obviously, just looking at it.
When was the last time Kathy cut a check to the general fund?
That's a good question, I have an email in our controller on that. I'm, I'm not sure.
Because my understanding is that she might have another $200,000 laying around.
Okay, maybe, that would help. Because when I saw the numbers going through, for, for instance, I sent it just to report this evening to Andrew. Since our tenure, we, we have dispersed, that's how far behind it was with the, with the prior administrator. We dispersed $664,000 in expenditures in a matter of a month, a little over a month and a half. So it's, it, it, and just getting, it's just getting the MNT accounts and getting squared away and all the other accounts. We still have the, well, as far I go to take care of the investment account in order to get the check signers on that. I think that I sent some, Andrew and I emailed today on that, which is the investment for the, for the police pension, is that, that prime pay cuts on a weekly basis. So we're, we're, we're working on that, and we're just working on finally getting everything reconciled. We'll get, soon as we get all the MNT accounts reconciled, we'll then, we'll be up to speed. But the Republic's the main account, and that's the one that we're, we're, we're almost finished reconciling through November.
Okay, I mean, I know that we lost quite a bit of revenue from not being able to conduct UNOs. There was, you know, certainly a loss there. You know, it's probably a dip in, in, in income tax income. Probably, probably got some revenue reduction problems there. So given the, the, the picture that you now have, the accurate picture of Borough Finances to date, what, what, what advice do you have for me? Where are we, are we in trouble?
You definitely, if, I mean, we, we absolutely need to, to know what, what's in the real estate account for as soon as possible, so we can get a good picture. So even that, not, that $200,000 notwithstanding, if it's not in there, you still have enough to make payrolls, and I looked at the expenditures for last December, and I, you, you would be, you would still be in, in the positive at the end of the year.
Okay.
So. Including the 350 MNO.
And the $35,000 for the, the front-end loader?
Yes, you'd still, it would be, you would be very close. So that's, that's, I mean, it's vital that, that Ms. Kelly gets that information, that we get the, this, whatever's in that account.
Okay.
I don't, I don't recall seeing a deposit in that amount of anything for the real estate taxes. So.
Okay, so yeah, because I think she, last year, we, we talked, I didn't know if she, there was a check between then and now. I'll call her tonight. I'll ask her, all right, and I'll, I'll, you know, I'll call you tomorrow or text you, you know.
Yeah, that will be the big difference in, in how the, the year finishes out, otherwise it's going to be really tight.
Okay, very good. Well, not very good, but very good work, thank you. Not good news, good work.
Quick question for you, Mike. Yes. The, I, I believe, if, just correct me if I'm wrong, the fireman's relief check stuff, that's in the MNT account, correct?
And has that been deposited to the MNT account? Andrew can confirm this, but we dispersed it from the Republic account.
We were able to take, take care of that, okay.
That's been mailed out, yes, yes.
I would just, I, but I couldn't remember, so I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Right, and before the meeting this evening, I emailed, just, I mean, just as the, as the meeting was starting, I emailed Andrew a listing of all disbursements from our tenure, from October 16th on.
Thank you, I just wanted to confirm that, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, Mike. So Borough Managers' Report?
Not a ton, it wasn't already covered, I've mostly been working on the, the stuff we've already discussed in here. Only thing I wanted to let you know with regard to code enforcement right now, Lisa, I don't know what dates your staff are coming out to do tickets and how that's being worked out right now exactly. But Joe Donnelly, our employee, will be, unfortunately had a, a personal matter and was unable to start working on the date we expected. He's an employee, he's done his paperwork, but he will be coming in, I believe, for training Lisa. If we can schedule something on Monday, I sent an email about it today, so not a rush, but we're hoping to get him in Monday or after, and he'll be able to begin training and then doing the job. So that's the only thing I want to discuss, front-end loader, we already covered it, so. That's about it.
All right, very good. Anything under old business? Anything under new business? Anything I should add, Andrew, that I haven't?
No, I think that, I think we're good.
All right, and I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, go in peace, and thank you.
Have a great night, stay healthy.
Everybody.
Thank you.
Stay safe, see you.